Hey, Ray, was Fowler mad at you or me when he was doing all that hammer?
Good morning. I call the June 30th, 2015, Sling County Commission Public Forum and Meeting to Order. Will everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We might keep Rita in prayer this week, she lost her brother.
Very good. Mention that on the announcements. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I'll open up the public forum for citizens may speak on any issue, not on the current agenda. It's usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Don't.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, this is about denying public comment after department updates was changed on June 23rd. Previously, public comments at department updates were allowed. Without notice to the public, this policy was changed that affects Roden Bridge, Prazer's, Community Corrections, SHARE, Planning and Zoning, and others. The decision not to allow public comment according to Chairman Shadwick was discussed and voted on by the Commissioners.
That is not true. I did not say that. Go ahead.
Well, there's nothing in the minutes regarding this policy change or changing this policy. I could probably refute that statement, Monty, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure.
The question is, I would like to ask each Commissioner when they voted on this policy change, or did they? Did you, Mr. Smith, you know, vote on this policy change?
This was a decision of the Chair. I run the meetings and it was just a decision to do this. It's not required by law as opposed to the public hearings and the things like that. They're just Commissioner updates.
So what was the reason for the change?
I don't think it's a time for the public to harass our employees, and they're just Commissioner updates.
So you're saying this is a grievous effect then, not harassing all the employees from the county?
What word did you use? I don't know what that means.
Well, it seems to be that's when it occurred, right after there's issues and snafus regarding the issues, bringing up issues in public meetings, you know, about Community Corrections. Personally, I believe this policy needs to be reversed and allowed to public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to comment other than just the Chairman on this policy?
Well, I think we could put it on the agenda and have a discussion between the Commissioners, you think?
It's up, that's fine.
I mean, that...
One final question is, what is the statute of authority allowing the Chairman to do this?
The Chair runs the meetings. It's statutory?
Yeah, there's got to be some rule that says you can do it. What is it?
Don't know. I'll look at that.
Well, I'd go back and suggest that we visit about it in an agenda meeting.
We can have it.
Would that be all right, Ray, if we could do that?
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Maybe the, after July 4th, you know, because it's going to be kind of messed up during that period.
Yeah, probably two weeks from today.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
Boy, I appreciate that.
Exactly.
Karen Shade, 111, Wisconsin. I too would ask that you reconsider the prohibition about asking, the public having a chance to ask questions of department heads. There is a distinction between harassment and not, and I don't think the public wants to do that, but it is one opportunity for the public to know. The other thing I wanted to just comment on and thank the Board for, at least including in the budget process so far, the salary survey. I think that's a really important step. And it was done quietly, but it was a good thing to read about, so I thank you.
Any further comment? Thank you, as always. I'll bring it back to the Commission for item number one.
Request for Action 161-15 to Central Kansas Foundation Contract, and I have a report by Annie Grievous, Director of Community Corrections.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As previously, we spoke with us in a study session a week or so ago. We are requesting to sign a contract with CKF, Central Kansas Foundation, to collect weekend UAs. We are doing this for a trial period, July 1, hopefully through September. If successful and we see value in it, we would like to continue the contract. This originated from Judge Johnson in Drug Court, trying to increase some UA collections. It is not something that our office can do themselves because I, we're closed on the weekends. Our offices, we're not closed to the public, but we are, our office facilities are, and I would have to have two staff up there for the entire time to collect those UAs and pay overtime. So it's not fiscally responsible of us to do it that way. I can contract with CKF for $10 per person that actually gives a UA. If they don't show, we don't get charged the $10. The $10 pays for his staff time and the effort of storing the UAs and collecting them and returning them to us. We want to give it a three-month trial period, as I explained earlier. The agreement is very clear. It's been through our office and Mike Montoya, and Mike Montoya did agree on the final contract. We would like to start the services and give it a three-month period of testing just the Drug Court clients first to see how it goes. We want to see how many actually show up. We don't know what's going to happen. Judge thinks that those that don't show are probably positive, and those that show are freely clear. But we do have a good, about 98% of clean UAs and attendance to UAs with Drug Court clients. So we may have several. All supplies are being provided from our agency to CKF, and CKF has been trained on our protocol for a collection of UAs. So I'm seeking permission to have your chairperson sign this contract. And if approved, we would begin this July 4th, which might be a little iffy. But we would start the 4th and the 5th and start our three-month trial period.
So how do you let them know that they have to do a UA?
We have a random call-in system that they use now, and all we will do is add the codes. Every client is given a code when they're assigned to our agency, 31B, 67, whatever. So they call every day beginning at 5:00 AM for that code. And they know they have until about 4:15, 5:15 to come in and give that UA. We'll just put it on that same code system. They'll be, they've been notified that, they've already started calling the code system. They know that they need to call on UA or on weekends, so seven days a week. And if their code is called, they're instructed to go to the detox door at CKF on the weekends. It's very random. They don't know what's coming.
And does this funding, is this funded by your...
It comes out of our budget.
Out of your budget?
Absolutely. Yes.
Do you know who's not calling in? Can you tell who didn't call in to receive their code?
Yes, because when we set up the system, we also set up a code book in the UA room. So when, we know exactly who's supposed to show for all those codes. We have a listing every day of each client that's supposed to show under what codes. And so when they don't show up, we do know immediately.
Not show up, not even call to see if their code is called?
No, we don't know that they didn't call until we confront them and why didn't you come in for your UA? And when you say here, "Oh, my gosh, I forgot to call in."
Okay.
Well, it is driven into the intake level. You must call in every day. And it is told over and over, you must call in every day. So it's not an excuse. In fact, they go down as a no-show for a UA and can be sanctioned by the Judge for not showing for that UA.
Okay.
Did they call in on weekends before then?
No, we have not called in weekends before, but Judge Johnson told them about a month ago to start calling in.
That it would happen?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they were...
And let's face it, we're going to have some of that. I didn't, oh, I forgot, we are supposed to call in. We're going to have some of that in the beginning. Judge has been very consistent from the bench every Monday, saying, "Make sure you're calling in for your weekend UAs." So we'll see how that plays out.
When they call in, like they called in this morning, and they've got till 4:30 to come. They can start at 6:00, but before, or they've got to pretty good...
They can come in as early as 7:00 AM.
Yeah, 7:00, okay.
And actually, we go till about, on normal days, about 5:15, 5:30. Because we're open till 6:00 PM also, our offices.
Is the weekend going to be that one?
Weekend, no. We're going to have a separate time period. They will come in on different hours. I think it's 1:00 to 4:00, and then 6:00 to 8:00 on the day it's called.
So if you come in and...
Are you going back to a traditional UA or a CKF UA?
Yeah, I want to compare the two. If we come in, say we come in at 4:00 and get our UA.
On a traditional UA.
And what does that cost?
Our UAs are six bucks. The expectation is for clients to pay six bucks. By no means, if they don't have the $6, do we not collect that UA typically, because we want that UA.
So they can't say, "I didn't have the money, so I didn't come in."
Correct. What happens is if they don't come in with the money, because we did set it up many, many years ago that a client cannot charge UAs, because if I got into that, I lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. UAs are very costly. So a client is supposed to come in with a money order. We don't accept cash every time they give UA. Or lots of them will submit several money orders to us and they have them in their files. But if they don't give, what we do is we contact the officer, Ruth McDaniel. "Ruth, is it okay if Bobby charges his UA today?" Absolutely, I want to collect that UA. Because that would be an excuse. You're right.
Well, that going to be the same on the weekend?
They're not paying for the weekend UAs. Community Corrections is paying for the weekend. Remember, their $10 are charged to us.
So they'd be pretty happy to have a weekend with them.
So there's no reason for them not to be able to come in and give that UA.
That was my question. I just don't want, you know, I mean, let's face it, they could be broke. They could have not a dime to their name that day, and they still need to take their UA.
Right.
So you're covering that.
Well, we're covering those, and I have to tell you that clients, we give hundreds of thousands of dollars of free services to clients every year, every year, through grants that I write. And so if I looked and showed you the amount of money that we give to clients, and they don't have to pay for that, and that includes UAs, you'd be astonished, I think.
Well, I think they need to pay. I'm not saying they do need to pay.
I know what you're saying, but some people don't have the $10 on them or a $6 money order on them, and we do accommodate them.
Why you not take cash?
We don't take cash for safety reasons. We don't keep any cash in our system. DOC, Department Corrections, would prefer you not to have a cash system. It's a better recording system for us to take money orders. We do take checks, but our growing list of bad checks is continuing. And once we receive one bad check, we don't take any checks from them again. So money orders are our safest bet.
What about debit cards?
No, we don't have that set up.
Well, I think $10 for CKF sounds fairly reasonable. I got to admit, last week when I, I didn't notice that until I saw it this week, and I thought, well, that's fair.
$4 would pay a lot of overtime, right?
Yeah.
I mean, overtime's going to cost a whole lot more than...
It would cost me three times what it is going to cost me now to do it. So yes, it is, and I thought $10 was very reasonable, and I want to thank Les Spurling. He's always been a very good partner with Community Corrections, always. CKF just does some really, really good work, and we're lucky to have them in our community.
That's good to hear. Further questions, comments, public comment?
Yes, Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I had this question previously, and I was, I wanted to ask it. It was about, since I live, or my business is next door, I see the steady stream of clients going there to take their drug tests, and then I see them being arrested when they leave. And my question is, is when they fail on the weekends, these tests that they're giving, does that have any effect on the cost to the county or to the added, just say, cost to this issue?
To get arrested, you mean?
Yeah, to get arrested on the weekend. And that seems to me that that would be connected to maybe overtime possibly?
I can quickly answer this question. There'll be no arrests on the weekend.
But they will come before the Judge, and they could go to jail because of...
And that's a, I can't speak for the Judge. So when you say that, they will come before a Judge, and the Judge will say, "Why weren't you there for your UA?" That doesn't mean they'll go to jail.
But their employer will appreciate it because they'll be sober on Monday, right?
I would hope.
Well, I would hope, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good deal.
Listen, if anybody thinks this is a bad idea, they're not thinking this through clearly. This is an excellent idea.
Okay, you had another question?
No, I just wanted to thank Annie for clearing that up.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say before you vote that I have to go on, so I was going to leave the contract with Don. He graciously said that he would get the signature, and then we'll send staff over to get it later if approved. Thank you.
Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Well, I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we move to approve the contract with Central Kansas Foundation for the trial period of three months, as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
RFA 161-15.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number two.
Request for Action 163-15, Kansas Department Health and Environment Ebola Preparedness Grant Contract. Have a staff report by Jason Tiller of the Sling County Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have a request for action for the Ebola Preparedness Grant with the Health and Diversity Preparedness Program. This grant is for $18,772 to train and equip health departments to respond to Ebola and similar agents over an 18-month period. Grant requirements are listed in Appendix A, like we looked at last week, which is mainly to purchase those items, keep in store, maintain the training requirements, and exercise those training requirements. There is no budget impact to the county, and this grant does not require any matching funds. We recommend that the action to approve this grant, sign this contract, so we can improve our capabilities to respond to disease outbreak of the Ebola major.
Questions of staff?
And there was no cost to the county, is that the way I understood it?
No, the county, all the costs are covered by the grant.
Okay, very good. All right. Public comment?
Karen Shade, 111, Wisconsin. In the public health arena, there's an expression, "When you hear hoof breaths, think horses, not zebras." And it's just a reminder to think about what is most common. And I know Jason later on will, in your report, are you giving a report today? We'll talk about some of the different concerns. My biggest concern with Ebola is it's what gets people's attention right now. And I think for the preservation, or for the peace of mind it might give first responders, having the training will be a good thing. There's another topic in the news right now. It's about whooping cough. Been around for decades, and it's, it will likely affect 49,000 children this year. There are some new recommendations, and I guess I'm a bit puzzled. While we hear a lot from the Public Health Department on Ebola, we're not necessarily hearing about the recommendations on pertussis. That there be a DTAP shot for pregnant women at two months, four months, six months, or, excuse me, for at birth, two months, four months, excuse me, for children, at two months, four months, six months, 15 to 18 months, and four through six years. That there be a TDAP shot for teens, and that there be additional shots going forth. So I printed out a summary, and I got a little distracted, so I'll pass it to you now. But I just ask that you be aware that there are many public health diseases that we need to be monitoring for. In two old textbooks, one dating 1911, they list the role of the County Board of Health to help protect the health of citizens against contagious diseases. And I just wanted you to be aware of the new recommendations. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any further public comment?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Jason, this grant is to train and equip health department providers to respond to Ebola and similar agents. Could you clarify that little short paragraph, is exactly what this grant money is going to be spent for?
What it says, so that we can be able to have the right equipment in order to deal with Ebola and similar agents, be able to put it on right, and the necessary steps in directing to isolation, quarantine, or something like that were to occur in the county.
So what is the equipment you referenced there just a second ago? What kind of equipment?
Protective equipment that is worn.
Okay, all right. I understand that.
Steps in order to put all of that stuff on and make sure it's done safely, so that you don't have incidents where, you know, nurses or staff contract disease because they're not worn properly.
How was this grant amount calculated, and how did you come about, you know, applying for it?
Well, the KDHE applied for the grant through the federal government, and then they determined the price, the amount of the grant at their level, and this was the grant amount that was awarded.
So they're doing it in every county in the state?
Every county was offered it. Not every county is accepting it or taking it, but every county was offered the grant.
Were the majority that were offered it, did they take it?
Yes.
And do you know the other side that didn't take it? How many were there?
I don't know the number.
Well...
Most of those counties were very rural health departments, I think like the west end, so they only have one or two people.
Well, I'm not isolating you on this grant money issue. It seems like everyone calls it free money. Well, it's our money. And can, you know, could the county actually buy this equipment themselves?
They could, but it is very expensive. That's why this grant, a lot of the grant is focused on for health departments to be able to purchase the equipment. Because if we were trying to use, say, our annual budget that we have, our normal budget, it potentially could use up a lot of that money, and then we wouldn't be able to do anything.
Well, then, if you didn't accept the grant, then the Commission would have to come back and say, "Allow some money to pay for this type of equipment on an isolated basis," like for, you know, the suits, you know, the space-age suits you get into and...
Correct. If we don't have this grant, then we'd have to find some other funding source in order to have the equipment here in Salina to respond.
What is the alternative, or do you have any alternatives?
To the money or to the...
To provide the money. Do you have any other way to access other than through the Commission?
Not that I know of, probably.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Jason.
Further public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, I make a motion that we accept RFA number 163-15, the KDHE Ebola Preparedness Grant Contract, to be accepted as requested and presented today by the Health Department.
I'll second that, but I have a question too, if I can. Other things besides Ebola that this would be helpful for or used for?
Well, any of those types of highly contagious agents that we're not normally dealing with, so like Ebola, Marburg, some of the other type of hemorrhagic viruses, what some might consider like biosafety level three or four, where you need to be in full containment. So it's not, even though it's under the Ebola heading, it's not just Ebola-specific. It is for that kind of class of agents.
And I think that just the last week, I understood that the biggest disease that's going around right now is plague. And it was created by fleas, the way I understood it. Have you heard that?
Carried by fleas.
That's number one going on in our country today. It doesn't have anything to do with whooping cough. Whooping cough was way, way down the line. They've treated that for many years.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes 5 to 0. Item number three.
Health Department Monthly Update, again with Mr. Jason Tiller, Health Department Coordinator.
All right, Commissioners, well, I thought we have it up on the screen this morning, but with the update today, we've actually taken the statistics from the beginning of 2015 and put it into a visual update where you can be able to compare different month-to-month indicators for the sub-departments. In the future, this will be showing just a 60-day, basically two months prior to the month that the update is in, so that it doesn't take quite as long or doesn't, you know, have as much information. But we'll still have the rest of the data in these bar charts that we can do a long-term comparison as well. So MCH, do you guys have the charts as part of your package? Okay. So MCH, their prenatal visits are actually a combination of Healthy Start clinic visits, and they're becoming a mom attendance. Postpartum, looking at the hospital visits, clinic visits, and home visits, which we're all seeing a fairly steady number across all of these for what they're seeing. So they're staying extremely busy over there. Infants are also hospital visits, clinic visits, and home visits. Consult, that category is, represents, once they do a home visit, if it's determined that the infant needs to see a specialty provider of some sort, or, you know, maybe WIC or some nutritional additional stuff, then they'll generate a consult for that. And then the SHCN is for special healthcare needs, which are some of those that have, that may be born with congenital heart defects, issues, things like that. Childcare licensing on the next one. Salina, of course, being the home base, they have a fairly large presence there. And McPherson and Ottawa, where they are seeing other childcare facilities and centers there. On the bottom in the legend, the inspections are the initial renewal compliance regulated complaint, which is someone that may file a complaint about the childcare center or the childcare facility at home. An illegal complaint, which is one of those where somebody may be trying to operate a childcare facility out of their home, but they're not licensed, and then other, which could be a range of things. And then orientations make up for new owner and operators for childcare centers and childcare homes. On the next one for WIC, the, looking at it for the month, so we have the number that have applied for WIC. The BFPC is the breastfeeding peer counselor, which is the one that helps new mothers with breastfeeding, if they're having breastfeeding issues, and with education. Those that come in to pick up their WIC checks. Certifications for income and background, high-risk follow-up, which may be one of those that were generated from the home visit that MCH did, or somebody that transferred in, meaning they were receiving... Or somebody that transferred in, meaning they were receiving WIC services somewhere else and then they moved into the area. Couple of other things to note is that the active caseload, and I didn't include it on the chart because then it would, things would have looked very squarely because the active caseload for January was 1,480, February 1,453, March 1,394, April 1,370, and May 1,387.
What were those figures, Jason? I didn't catch that.
I will make copies of these for you.
But what was that, what were those numbers at the very end?
Oh, they were the active caseload.
Okay. The totals?
Right.
For the months, is that what you were reading there?
For each month, yes.
Yeah.
For all those different categories of what they're seeing each month up there. Next one you have is home health.
Back up just a minute.
Mm-hmm.
The check pickup, I missed that. They come into your office?
Right, to pick up their WIC checks.
Pick up a WIC check.
So they'll have a visit where they'll do the height, weight of the child. They'll check, do the assessment, make sure that the income is still where they initially reported, those kinds of things. And that's part of the certification. And then after that, then they can come in and be able to pick up checks until the next time that they are certified, which I double-check on the timeframe for how often they're supposed to be certified. But that check pickup is when they come in. And then if that one's a quick office visit, they pick up their checks and until their next time.
And other places in Salina where that can happen?
To pick up? No.
It's only...
Yeah, this only occurs at the WIC office to pick up for WIC. Your home health visits. Again, their client numbers are staying fairly steady from month to month with some fluctuations. Any questions on that one?
What is, what is ST? I figured physical, occupational, and P, ST? P, T, O, T, and S, T at the bottom, the orange column? What kind of therapy would...
I just drew a blank on that one.
Okay.
Physical therapy, occupational therapy.
Speech.
Speech therapy.
Speech therapy, yes.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, I can think of the other two and then it just kind of suddenly went out there. And that might be for some of your stroke patients and things like that, too.
Sure.
Got it.
Clinic stays extremely busy. If you look at the next one. A lot of their caseload is made up from immunizations and then the foreign travel immunizations. Birth control, STDs, their TV services. And one thing that we're also looking at capturing here that they do, which is not a per-visit necessarily, is the time that's spent on the disease investigation. So when they get a notification from KDHE of hepatitis B or hepatitis C, then they have to go through and they have to do patient contacts and making the phone calls. And if they've had contact with somebody else and going through all that, and there's a lot of time that can be involved with that. So we're looking at a better capture of that time that's involved because they also have weekend calls for some of that stuff as well. And that'll give us a better indication of exactly how much more that they're doing because this doesn't give us a full picture. But we'll see more of that in the next update. The next one you have just shows for the first and second quarters of 2015, just the breakdown of the diseases that were investigated. Now Ebola active monitoring, and I believe I had spoke to this a little while ago that we'd had three missionaries that had been in, I believe it was Sierra or Lyon or Liberia, one of them. Active monitoring is just that twenty-one day process when they come back where their temperatures are checked every day, to look for any kind of signs or symptoms of Ebola. It does not mean that there was any active Ebola. It's just that quarantine period afterwards. And all three of them were, finished their twenty-one days without any issues.
When did that occur, Jason?
I believe it was April.
Okay. Back when the Ebola originally, we had the thirty-four people that started, you know, in the emergency management. They had, I believe they had twenty-eight of them in that area. Over there was, I'm trying to think of what, Lutheran, it was a Lutheran church.
Okay.
And they came over to New York and took their twenty-one days. That was in that same time period of that thirty, thirty-day period.
Yeah, and these three were three that we actually had here in the area.
Yeah. But these were all from Salina also back then. That was kind of neat.
Well, these three, when they first came back to the states, I believe they came through Atlanta and were initially screened. And then we were notified that they were en route and they were actually met, I believe in Kansas City. And then we were monitoring them for the next three weeks after that.
That was these three, the three, yeah.
Right.
I know the other was a group. It was an actual group that came back all at once.
Yes.
Would you have to put that garb on to do this?
No, when they come back from something like that, we will give them all of the equipment. And then they check their temperature and give us a report. And the infectious disease nurse will, she'll talks to them on the phone every day. And if they start to develop any type of symptoms, then we start a different type of assessment. I'd have to go back to the books on which the steps are from there based off of what they're seeing. So do we have any questions on there?
No.
All right. The next one that talks about the Heartland Early Head Start, where I have a list of just some fat, or statistics there. That one originally was a cumulative report, and I think it's included in there. It was from August until March, I believe. And then I worked with Casey over this past week over there at Heartland that we get a month-to-month breakdown, which I had added into the presentation this morning, expecting that we'd be able to broadcast it. That one there essentially shows from month to month, their numbers of children, pregnancy, developmental screens, et cetera.
Now, that's a head start that you're talking about there?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And then I had a couple of other additions and I'll give these to you just a second so that you can have a look at them. But just a breakdown of, since we had talked about all the other sub-departments of pretty much my time spent with between meetings, trainings, conferences, that kind of stuff, which most of mine, a good deal of it is meetings, of course. And then Health Department highlights. KDHE had recognized during the Governor's Public Health Conference in this last quarter, twenty-seven counties that were exceptional in their disease investigation and follow-up. And Saleen County was one of those twenty-seven counties to receive what was called the John Snow Award. And then also, the Health Department had donated over 2,000 cans of tuna in support of Project Salina just in May. And then our MCH program was recognized by the March of Dimes as, has set a high, having other communities across the state and shared at various national meetings that are wanting to emulate our program. The enthusiasm and dedication from your collaborative partners to ensure this program is a success for our community says to many of us at the state level that Saleen County is a community that cares for its families and wants to bring the best quality of life to its citizens. We are proud to call your community our partners and are grateful for Saleen's program, continued success, to continue to share with our communities how this collaborative integrates local and state resources and services. Saleen County Health Department and the collaborative partners took a vision and changed the community maternal-child health services for the better. And I'll give you these that you passed down as well. I apologize, I thought we were going to have the screen to deal with this additional material.
And the visuals are helpful. Again, we have it in our packet, but it's helpful to the public.
Well, these are additional to the ones that were in the packet. But that concludes my update. At this time, do you have any questions or guidance?
Questions, Jason?
On that one you were talking about, or did they rank you, or did they rank you anywhere? And like, say, the rating?
Out of those twenty-seven?
Yeah.
They didn't provide a ranking of them?
Okay, well, I didn't figure they did, but I thought...
Yeah, they just said out of the hundred and five counties, these twenty-seven were doing it and doing it well.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Happy fourth.
Thank you. Same to you.
Item number four.
Planning and zoning monthly update with David Neal, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, start off with the permit activity. Permitting has been a little bit slow. I'm going to blame it mostly on the heavy rains we've had recently and now it's harvest time. People are a little busy to actually do any construction. I'm not sure what I'll expect in the future. If we have a good harvest, usually I see a little more construction pickup. If the harvest isn't as good, well, probably not as many permits coming in. Right now, I'm okay with that. We've got other work going on with the environmental side and planning projects coming in. Most of the permits that are coming in, still accessory buildings, the outbuildings, although we've had a couple of homes come in and a couple of home additions. Commercial, nothing new on the commercial side. They're all still working on building their buildings, getting the inspections done. And I'm going to flip over to the, the planning activity is picking up a little bit. We've got a couple text amendments this year. For everything coming in, in June, we didn't have a hearing. For July, we're going to have two items on the hearing. There's a subdivision exception. Basically, a guy has a quarter section out at Country Club in Niles. He's going to separate it out, about fifty acres of land. He'll be allowed to do three, three lots, however he wants on the fifty acres. The rest of the land will just be preserved for farming. The biggest concern is the, there's a subdivision just on the south side of Country Club. They're not so worried about the lot splits. They're more worried about the quality of the homes going on those lots in the future or having any feeding operations out there. They'd like to see something similar to the covenants that they have in their neighborhood, which Planet Commission can discuss it and then see if they want to accommodate that or not. Also coming on July 6th is a text amendment to change the voting requirements. We would go from the unanimous voting requirements to a two-thirds following the state. Basically, it's two lines in our code, one under conditional use permits and one under zoning amendments. We just take out the word unanimous and put in two-thirds. Coming up, oh, May's text amendment. I put that, that hearing that we had, you talked about the text amendment for the term limits. That one, we have to get the voting requirements in effect first. So that has to be published in the Salina Journal to take effect. I would expect you to hear the term limits case probably July 28th, depending on your agenda and availability. And then the term limits obviously wouldn't take effect until that's published. Coming up in August, I just got the application in. Johnson Sand on the, it's just east of town on Schilling. They had a, their conditional use permit had them renew their license every few years. They're coming in for a renewal of their sand operation out there. I don't know what to expect. It is just, they've been operating for a considerable amount of time. But anytime you mention a sand pit, people have issues with it. For violations, violation at 1849 West North Street, we're moving on with that one. The bids have been sent out to contractors. We expect to open them on the 20th. And then I'm not sure when that will be brought to the commission. I'm going to expect the begin, first week of August as far as making a vote on which contractor should take care of that. The kennel operation out at 5310 North Holmes Road. If you remember, we had done a conditional use permit for that back in February. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like they've come into compliance. I, technically, I've given them till this is the last day, but I haven't seen any compliance as far as getting a hobby kennel license or meeting USDA requirements. I will verify that and then probably send out a violation notice. On the other side...
Excuse me, David. On a violation, does it mean they cannot operate? Or is it a fine or what is...
We will be asking them to stop operations. And if they don't, we would probably file an injunction with court.
Okay. Thank you.
On the other side, Wild Wild West, they got their septic system back into operation. They've got a maintenance agreement with us, so that one's been cleared. Oh, and I added this one, out at 4720 West Pleasant Hill Road, it's a HUD home. The septic tank had collapsed in. It's, it's kind of an odd situation. The concrete cover of the tank is collapsed into the tank. The ground is actually still hanging above the tank, so it's a little bit dangerous. Since HUD is the property owner, we had them stake it out with some construction barrier to make sure people don't walk on that and fall in. And then they're working with us to replace that tank. With HUD, it takes a little bit more time. It's a, it's a federal agency. They work a little slower. For environmental health, they've always done their reporting on a quarterly basis, so I've kept them at that. I'll have all the reports July or next time we meet. They've been fairly busy. Lots of septic systems, mostly repair work coming in. For the care grant, the two parts of the care grant, the healthy homes, we're still progressing with that. We're probably about eighty-two homes. Last time I counted, we'll easily hit our mark of a hundred homes with that one, so I'm not too worried. The other part is the radon testing. So I always, we have radon test kits in the office. The grant is for anybody in the city of Salina. If you want to test your house for radon, come into my office. I will give you a free test kit. Please come in and test it. Take the opportunity. For the radon mitigation, the way the EPA grants work, they don't actually give grants to install systems. They give grants to train people how to install. Part of that training is on-the-job training, so we will be able to, we have fourteen people lined up to have systems installed in their houses because of high radon. Our biggest problem there is the contractor, he's got some set up for July. He'll be out of the country in August. We're going to try to get some more set up in September. But we also have to get the trainees set up to do those jobs with him. That's the hardest part.
That free test just in Salina or is it the county?
Unfortunately, the grant was set up for just the city of Salina. This was done four years ago when it was, the city sponsored it with the, at that time, city-county health department. And it's just kind of fed over, so we will continue to help as many people as we can. With the radon grant, the goal for us is try to help as many people as we can, obviously. There's still some funding in that grant. We may ask for an extension. EPA will give us one more year and that would be the end of it. It doesn't end up costing the county anything. Obviously, we would still come back to you and tell you we are getting this extension or not. It just gives us an opportunity to get more systems installed for people and try to help out a little more. As far as the other projects, sorry, floodplain mapping, I'm still waiting on the state. I think a lot of that is waiting on the levy recertification. They can't, it's the entire county at one time, so they can't really move on until that's done. One thing I have to add in, and I'm not sure if you're aware of it or not, there's a new 911 system. It's a next-gen 911 that's coming in. This won't actually take effect until 2017. And most of that is being run through our GIS department. I've been working with Judy on some of this as far as addressing. The addressing requirements will end up changing. The way that the new 911 system wants it in our system doesn't meet the way we address properties. So at some time, we will probably bring up a, an amendment to our addressing policy. Instead of addressing from the driveway, we would address the house from where the house is on the street. And then to make sure our rural fire departments can get to the property, place another, our GIS has the ability to put that same address point on the driveway so that they know this driveway gets to this house. It gets a little complicated in counties. Cities, it's pretty easy. This is house number one, this is house number three, they're right next... This is house number one, this is house number three. They're right next to each other. Counties, you can have a driveway that's a quarter mile long and that there's, could be a considerable difference in block numbers. So we have, we'll just have to make some corrections. I'm not sure when that will get to you. I just wanted to make sure you know it, it'll eventually come up.
Are, so their addresses will change, or they're just going to be coordinated for the new mapping?
For new houses.
Oh, okay.
Their addresses, unless...
What about existing? What about existing?
Existing houses, unless we absolutely have to, we are not changing anything.
Okay, so, but they'll still be recognizable?
Right.
They're still in the, in the GIS, so they're still recognizable in the event of an emergency?
As far as we know right now, none of that will change. It's just a matter of, well, you're building a new house. I want to start addressing, as soon as we can, start addressing based on the new system.
Okay.
Instead of the older system so that there's less error when we go forward. But we don't want to change people's address. That's a pain.
Oh.
Well, where I live on Country Club Road, it used to be Marymount Road. And it's changed four times since we've built that house there in '66.
That's to be Marymount?
It used to be Marymount Road at one time.
What a, what a headache.
Yeah.
That's what they called it. And then now from Abilene, it's 1800, is that right, Tim? Is Marymount Road 1800?
15, I think.
17 or 16, something like that.
Yeah.
But then it goes into Country Club at the county line, I guess.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
All right.
Last couple things. We're still doing the mosquitoes. There's still a problem out there, so I will still, every chance I can tell people. We sell the Altocid tablets for $2 apiece. I know any hardware store, go to Waters, Lowe's, Ace, it doesn't matter. They'll sell mosquito dunks. It's pretty much the same price. Go somewhere, throw those things in the standing water and help get rid of the mosquitoes. Other stuff coming up. I'm not sure if you've gotten a letter yet or not. All Stop Sand and the Land Institute are having a little dispute about trucks driving down Waterwell Road. As far as the county goes, All Stop Sand is meeting all the conditions of their use permit. The trucks aren't violating any moving violations that the sheriff would have to enforce. It's just part of trying to be good neighbors with each other. I believe in the letter, the, the Land Institute is asking if the county would do any oil surfacing or something to keep the dust down on that road. That would be a discussion for the county commissioners.
Okay.
I will probably be bringing you next week a resolution for annexation. Part of the agreement that we had with the city about trading the park for future possible Expo Center land down on Ohio. If we want the utilities extended to that property, we have to annex that property into the city. The first step of that is just a formal resolution by the commission saying, yes, have, and I put myself on there as the person representing the county. So yes, have Planning and Zoning represent the county and apply to the city to annex that land.
How long's that take?
The city will probably have an annexation meeting in August, is what they're expecting. And what I'm looking at is annexing the, the piece of land that we have and all the part of Ohio road straight over to the city limits.
So after, after August, how long will it take?
Once it's in August, it's, the annexation is done. It, it might need some technicalities like publication or something, but it won't take much. Last thing that'll be coming up. The airport is going to be applying for a text amendment for their airport regulations. They're doing it with both the city and the county. I'm sure part, if you're on the air, was it the Salina Airport Authority or Airport Board, they've gone over that a little bit as part of their master plan. The text is basically redefining their map, and they'll have a new map to provide. What it does to us is anything under that airport area map, we send that to the airport to make sure that the height doesn't interfere with their air, any of their FAA requirements or any of the, affect the airport operations, which comes down to it hasn't affected anybody out there. That's all I have for you.
All right, questions, comments?
I just, I just have a quick question on, I think it was one of the first sheets, maybe like the second one, where you have the quarterly permits and then the permits by type and quarter.
Right.
Everything is pretty self-explanatory. What falls under other?
Basically, anything that I do, I, I look at new homes, I look at home additions, and I look at accessory buildings. Those are typical buildings. Cell towers, I try to split out just to see how many cell towers we're working on.
Mm-hmm.
Flood fill is pretty much anything that is specifically floodplain-only sign. That's pretty obvious. Every now and then, I'll have to get a fence permit. One of the permits that went in here was for Westar power lines that had to run through a floodplain. It's, I don't really have a category for them. It's just a permit that came in. You're building a structure. I just want to make sure that it's safe.
Okay, and a sign? Someone has a sign on their property? Do you mean like a billboard, or what?
No, typically, these are small. This one, I believe, was for a home business. They do a little garage work along with their home. It's a small, probably 32-square-foot sign saying, "My business is here."
Gate, gate builders.
Oh, okay. You know, and that, that made me think of a billboard. How does that work when there's a billboard on, on property?
Billboards get a little different.
Do they go through you for the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
They typically go through me. If they are along any KDOT highway, they also have to go through KDOT.
Hmm, interesting. Never knew that.
All right, and any other questions, comments? Happy Fourth to you also.
Happy Fourth of July. Be safe with the fireworks.
Yes.
Our rural fire departments out there.
You bet. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five.
Approval of County Commission minutes for June 16, 2015.
I make a motion, we approve the June 16, 2015, Mr. Chairman, as presented.
I second that.
I have a quick comment.
Okay.
The, the big items on the sheriff, like 40,000 overtime, 45,000 prisoner meals, those are added. And it doesn't, you know, maybe that is clear to people, but...
Yeah, that was added.
It doesn't say it was an additional. It just, it could be read that that's the total budget. And I think if that were noted as being, those are additional items, it would be clear.
What was the number?
Well, all of these sheriff items, there were 10,000, 800, there was a 40,000, there was a 45,000.
Yeah, those were just added to the budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Those are increases, not total budget.
In addition to, yeah.
Right. What I was inquiring about was...
Come on up to the, that's fine. No, I'm taking public comment right now, so please come to the podium. Yeah.
I was just curious where it was in the minutes, you know, number, they're numbered one through, you know, 21.
It's under two, budget.
He's under number two, that kind of long, the long section there.
Okay, I got, all right.
It's all those individual items.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
That they covered the other day.
Well, I had a, since I'm up here, Ray Rusk at 235 North Santa Fe. I'm noticing that the heading on these minutes, there says June 23, 2015. And then immediately starts off into a minutes of June the 22nd.
Well, that's the reason they met that day, Ray.
I, I know, but my, my point is that I've never seen this combining of the minutes in the past, and I was curious.
Well, it's just the fact that they're meeting at various days, sir.
Well, I, I understand that, Don. I'm just wondering if that is a normal event?
That's, that's the way I've been doing it for many years.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify that because if you're going to approve June 23 meetings, you should say "and."
Well, this is the week of, so they met, in this case, they met several days. So that's what I've been doing since they've been meeting alternate days other than Tuesdays.
I understand, but it says, it's a specific date. Thank you, Don.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Thank you for the comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Under other business, first of all, just like to note that the county administrator is not here today and death in the family, so our thoughts and prayers go to her. And then I would just like, on the behalf of all the, my commissioners, I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Is there anything else to come for us today?
I'm good.
Motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.